Like to call the meeting order? You have to log in. In one second. Call the meeting order again. Mrs. Burns, roll call, please.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mr. Feather?
Here.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Present.
Thank you. All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board met in executive session this evening prior to this meeting to discuss employment and matters related to litigation. The district mission statement, "In the Shamani community builds futures by empowering each child to become a productive citizen and a lifelong earner." Any announcement, Mrs. Burns?
No announcements.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
Thought I hit it. Good evening, everyone. This is our monthly public work session. It's a little unusual in the sense that we do have some action items primarily for the purposes of approving the preliminary budget, so there will be some action items on our agenda, but the rest of it is our typical work session agenda. We have student artwork again at our public work session each month. We announced the fact that our student art is being displayed here in the boardroom in this month. It's the Fertabar Elementary School and teacher Dawn Loizos. And we appreciate the work, the creativity, and the effort put forth by our elementary students and the time that it took for the teacher to get the work here for us to enjoy. So, thank you. In our report, we talk about a couple of events happening in the district, one including a Welcome Workplace Initiative. I forget if I mentioned this at our last meeting, but we're working with the Pearl S. Buck International Group to build an opportunity for us to do better work, to make for our work environment, but also our school classrooms, places where all feel comfortable and welcomed into our school. And so, that's currently a team of about 50 individuals, administrators, teacher representatives, support staff representatives, who started that process and will continue it through the summertime. There's a two-day retreat, and then there'll be a leadership group that comes out of that that will continue that effort throughout our district. And so, we're excited about that work. It's important work to be done, and we're glad to be able to team up with the Pearl S. Buck International Organization. We want to congratulate high school teacher Chris DeChico. We were informed that he is part of an inaugural inaugural group of 40 under-40 alumni out of his college, the Arcadia University. Spotlighted Chris as one of their 40 in this first class. Chris is a published author. He's a high school English teacher. He leads our high school English department, and we appreciate all the good work that he does. We're glad to see him getting recognized. Want to also reference the fact that the district, under the guidance of our curriculum and instruction department, is participating in something called instructional rounds. These instructional rounds are modeled after the medical field, where you work to identify how we can do better with some of the problems that we have in our practice so that we can perform better the next time around. And so, we've had schools volunteer to be part of the school building that we go into as a district team to conduct these instructional rounds. This year, the high school volunteered, Fertabar has volunteered, and Hoover is last on the list for a visit. In the future, we will visit hopefully all of our schools soon, but also, we hope that our schools that participate will pick up the model and use it themselves so that it can continue an ongoing practice of improvement. And it's exciting to be involved in a district that takes the time to focus on how we can do better on our instructional front in a serious fashion like that. Thank Dr. Hancock for her leadership, the people in the curriculum and instruction office who support her, and all the people participating in that. We have We Build Future Award recognition from the prior month listed in the bulletin. These are people who are supporting our district mission. It's nice to get around the district and congratulate people who are doing good work. They are a small sample of all the good people across the district. And so, last month, Courtney Duffy, our school counselor at Tewanka, Sarah Appolito. She is a Mission One Instructional aide at Tewanka. James Hadley, here at Maple Point. Kristen Kneck, a teacher here at Maple Point. Jody Mucy, head custodian here at Maple Point. And Mary Ellen Pullock, an instructional assistant at Schweitzer. So, each of those presentations were great opportunities to connect with people who are doing good work on behalf of our kids. Finally, I do want to point out, it's not in my report, but Governor Wolf did release his education budget, actually, his overall state budget. And there are education dollars that are identified in that budget for increases in our basic education funding, 1.7% increase, and in special education, a 1.8% increase. Individual school allocations should be issued later this week, and it will give us a better indication as we continue to do our work on our local budget. And that's all I have in terms of my report. Ready to move into the presentation when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. In Board docs, each month, we do semi-annual reports for different cabinet members. In this month, if you want to go on the Board docs, it's the Human Resources Department, Mrs. Teri Hintonberger. Tonight, we do have one presentation. It's the One-to-One Technology Program in the elementary grades, and Catherine McGuire will do the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Shamani community, parents, school board, administration, and staff. My name is Catherine McGuire. I am the Instructional Technology Coach for the district. I'm very pleased to be here tonight to share just some of the ways our elementary teachers are utilizing their new Chromebooks and iPads in their classrooms. The addition of class sets of devices is allowing teachers to expand their standards-based instruction in innovative ways. While there are many great examples of tech integration currently in place around the district, Chris Stanley and I captured a few activities in action to share with you through video.
Today, what they're showing you is all of the different ways that they've used seesaw. So, they've demonstrated to you that they practice reading fluently, they practiced publishing writing pieces, like informational pieces. They're demonstrating to you that they're understanding math strategies by using the manipulatives. Some of them are drawing pictures of their families, because we're doing that in social studies, and telling about their families. And others are doing word work, building words and reading words.
I like the way that everybody gets to see it, and people like comment. Because my dad had comment a lot.
My mom said, "I love it."
I'm recording on bunnies. I had to write all these from my book, and then I copied them onto here, and then I had to do the picture, and now I have to record it. They have wiggly noses. They need large cages. They need food dishes and a water bottle. Top hat has chicken pox. So, she has lots and lots of spots. Her spots are big, her spots are little, on her back and front and middle.
And the cool thing is, is when they do submit things, I get to see it and provide feedback right away. So, I don't have to be with them at that moment, but I can look and see, you know, somebody maybe pronounced a word incorrectly, or maybe needs a little instruction on a different sound that a group of letters make, and I can follow up with that. We're practicing digital citizenship. So, we've been making a list of words that we can use when we look at somebody's post, and we can use nice words and give positive feedback.
I get to know what other people do, and other people get to know what I do. So, now I can share all the art that I do.
Working on our project-based learning. They did a wax museum. So, we wrote a biography, an informative biography, and they're using Flipgrid to record four to five sentences about their character. So, they're doing a practice run right now, transferring only the important part of the biography onto the Flipgrid.
My name is Charles Darwin. I was an foreign scientist. When I was only 22 years old, I boarded the HMS Beagle.
My name is Susan B. Anthony. I was born-
It offers choice for the students so that they're actually able to read instead of writing. Sometimes the writing portion of it can be frustrating for some students, and it also gives them the chance to go back and revise and edit what they've done.
I sailed to the tropical islands in South America.
I like using Chromebooks because, for my presentation, because I get to hear myself back.
I like that you can take as many tries as you want.
It's a cool tool. They fail to do a lot with it.
Hi, my name is Susan B. Anthony. I was the first woman to vote.
In the video, you were able to see how the devices give teachers the power to present lessons in a variety of ways. In addition, students now have increased options to demonstrate understanding. Mrs. O'Hara, the first grade teacher you saw, was using iPads with a digital portfolio program. The students can see each other's work, the teacher can view the work, and she can share it with parents as well. There's also the opportunity for feedback between groups. Using their devices, teachers can also assign leveled activities to develop strengths and address needs for students. And the Chromebooks and iPads have audio and video capabilities to support this learning. You also saw a fourth grade group preparing for a biographical wax museum. Students use Google tools to develop their research, developed their presentation, and they were able to share with the teacher and receive feedback. The fourth graders were also using a tool called Flipgrid, which enables teachers to post a prompt, and then through audio and video capabilities of the Chromebook, they can share their work and revise their presentations. The teacher can also share these students' submissions through their Google classrooms. As you can see, the students are excited to have these new devices in their classrooms, and the devices are very useful tools in all areas of their learning. They've been encouraging excitement, engagement, and participation for our 21st century learners. Any questions? Okay?
I just want to say a couple of things, and then I think a board member or two might ask a question.
Oh, sure.
But it should be pointed out, those were first graders who, in prior years, our kindergarten first grade had no real regular computer access. They now have those iPads every day in the room, 10 per class. Our Chromebooks in grades two, three, and four this year now in the classroom, a complete set for every student, every day, 180 days. That's all new this year. And so, thanks to Mrs. McGuire, she's done yeoman's work in trying to help a very large cadre of teachers kind of get off the ground, what do you do with these computers every day? And to see that work, and to see students just so regularly comfortable with documenting, using technology to interact, not just with each other, but with people outside their classroom, and have parents and grandparents able to come and comment on work and know that they're basically publishing work as first graders for others to see, really raises the level of interest and rigor. And you can see the care by which our students are taking with their work and how proud they are of the work that they're doing and what they're able to do with these devices. Probably, they're doing more, in some cases, our teachers have to recognize, even these little guys are comfortable and get to do more with that technology faster sometimes than we as adults do. So, thank you for all of your work for helping all of our teachers across a very large district. Go ahead. Yes?
I want to thank you for the work you've done. That's fantastic. I sat on the Technology Committee a couple of years back when we were first discussing the, you know, getting the iPad in the fifth grade and all that. And to see it really has taken off and expanded is just fantastic. I'm curious, there's just one little technical issue. One thing we were concerned about at the time was bandwidth, all the kids using, and if it was, like, everything come to a halt and slow everything down.
It seems to be okay. It's not an issue.
I assume we haven't heard. It just crossed my mind, I'm looking at that. We were worried about just the fifth grade class.
Yeah.
I think it's fantastic.
Great, thank you.
I just love seeing them share the work like that. They really seem, I know dealing with my own nieces and nephews, you know, the technology, they certainly get it faster than-
They do.
They're the ones I go to when I can't get my phone to work. So, you know. Thank you.
They pick it up very quickly. Thank you.
And just to expand on that a little bit, being part of the Technology Committee for a short period of time, we, there has been a significant amount of work improving the bandwidth and the access throughout all of our schools to be able to accommodate these improvements. So, it's incredible what's been done. So, thank you.
Thank you again. And the presentation was great. The kids are awesome. But I have a question. Are we currently using any research-based programs for reading, to improve reading comprehension?
The students do have access to Super Kids, which is their reading program. They do use Super Kids on the iPads and the Chromebooks also.
Okay, for reading?
Mm-hmm.
And math?
Math, we have iXL students use for practice. And they can also access their math curriculum through their iPads and Chromebooks. So, the lessons the teachers are working on, they can also use on their Chromebooks and iPads.
Go ahead, John. Is there interaction between other districts? I don't know that we currently do, but is that-
Not at this time, but it's something that we're working on developing, yes.
It was just, I believe I've read an article or two where you have district sharing, sharing, you know, they put on presentations and then they share research together. And I think that's pretty fascinating.
I was, just one sec. I was curious about how far, I shouldn't say how far. I know this year, we started with a new initiative in the elementary schools. We're starting to bring a STEM-style experience into the classroom. I know with the technology in there, of course, that aids that. How do we get, or what does the plan look like to getting a more broader integration between the actual technology, you know, and the everyday curriculum, as Cindy was indicating, you know, the math, the science, the reading, and so forth? I know we've started that, but maybe you can just give us a little broader idea?
The teachers are, when they're building their lessons, they're considering what standards they're going to cover, lessons and objectives, and then they decide which tool will best fit that and which program. So, across the board, the integration of technology is through their original objectives of learning.
So, it's not an easy job to be up on the podium there and answering questions on the spot. I have the luxury of being able to sit here. We are actually exploring some other districts that are a little, a step ahead of us. So, there's a nearby district that's utilizing the Khan Academy, that has a really nice background of all kinds of resources for teachers that are free and available. And then, you're correct, we're actually working with project-based learning activities that are in the classroom, that are having kids do real-life problems utilizing community-based resources, but also connecting through technology and the like. So, I think it's going to be an evolution. It's going to be hard, Ms. McGuire. You know, she takes care of digital citizenship. She took care of some keyboarding things across the district. She's getting out and seeing teachers, and then over time, you'll start to get a whole cadre of all the individual, but also the systemic issues that we're looking to try to bring to the forefront because of the fact that the technology is now available for our kids. So, we're excited. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McGuire.
That brings us to the public comments section. Mrs. Burns? Yeah?
Mr. Verdis?
Good evening. I'm Steve Verdis, Sullivan, Thelgesia Flowers Mill. I want to congratulate the district on doing what they have with computers so far. My only question is, since I am now able on my Chromebook to get Board docs, can you loan out some of these students to help me do the rest of the things? I think fourth grade would be perfect, for what I know. I wanted to know some, I see in the budget that there is a comment that our payment-in-lie-of-taxes agreement runs out next year. So, is there some movement underway to try and raise this payment in lieu of taxes? I think it's with, solely with one property. And personally, I think they're getting away with murder, but that wasn't my decision. So, I'd like to know if we can raise that along with our friends at Sesame Place. I'd like to know for future references, the difference between tax collectors, which appear on page 58 of this budget, and contracted tax collectors, which appear on page 59. Are these just different districts that collect the money and we pay them out, or is it a different, a different job? In view of what the governor came out with, we are currently budgeting noneducational subsidies from the state as $3 million less than last year, which is approximately half the difference in evening out our income and expenses. So, I'd like to know if that's, if the $3 million less in income is a firm figure, or will that be rising in the future? I have a question on custodial and plate maintenance. I don't know, and I missed a meeting last week. I don't know who or how you take care of the building maintenance, but usually, there are classrooms in the high school that are very, very cold, all day long, from when you open them in the beginning till when the kids leave at 2:13. I mean, there's, you know, the answer is, well, it's controlled somewhere, but it doesn't seem to be working out as far as keeping those classrooms at a comfortable level. I have a question. Are, or do you feel that you are getting your money's worth from the substitutes, both in the bus drivers and in classrooms? To be continued at a later date.
Thank you, Steve. That brings us to the resolution section. We have three action items. 2.01 is the 2018 to 19 preliminary budget. Since Mrs. Hollenbach is tied up at the airport, I will read 2.01 and 2.02. Whereas, in accordance with Act 1 of 2006, the Board of Directors has received a proposed preliminary budget for the 2018-19 fiscal year. And whereas, the proposed preliminary budget was made available for public inspection on Form PDE 2028, effective January 24, 2018. And whereas, in order to further comply with Act 1, the preliminary budget must be adopted by the Board of School Directors, on or before February 14, 2018. And whereas, Act 1 further provides for referendum exceptions, which must be submitted to and approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, on or before March 1, 2018. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Shamani Board of School Directors hereby adopts the 2018-19 preliminary budget in accordance with Act 1 of 2006, and it shall be made available for public inspection as required by law. Be it further resolved, that the school district shall apply to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for all available exceptions specified under Act 1. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Mrs. Boyle. Okay. Any comments, 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 questions, or observations?
I don't know if the chair would like to make the normal yearly disclaimer regarding the preliminary budget.
Well, this is just a preliminary budget. We have a lot of work ahead of us, and we need to submit it to be in accordance with the state, the PDE, at this point in time, so more to come. That will be the disclaimer for this year. Thank you. We have a second. All in favor? Opposed? 2.02 Healthcare Prescription Representation Authority. Whereas, the Shamani Board of School Directors desire to have its current healthcare and prescription plan coverage evaluated. And whereas, the Shamani Board of School Directors is interested in exploring other options for providing the current healthcare and prescription plan coverages for its employees, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shamani Board of School Directors hereby approves issuing letters of authorization to the following consultants in order to permit each to operate on behalf of the district to accomplish the desired analyses. Stalker &amp; Associates, Inc., Innovative Risk Solutions, Inc. Do I have a second? Second. Mr. Feather? All in favor?
Since Mrs. Hollenbach is not here, could you explain to the public the way we came to the conclusion to pick these two clients?
The administration sent out requests for proposals. We had five presenters. I guess that was last, last week. I don't remember what night it was. February 6th. And we narrowed it down to these two. And what they're going to do in the next six weeks period, by March 31st, they're going to come back, they're going to review our current health and prescription coverage and make recommendations whether we should stay with a consortium, or possibly go, see what other alternatives there are, and then we'll have to make a decision at that point in time. So, this is for a short-term, six-week analysis, and that's what they're, they're, anything approved, they do at this point. Any other questions, comments, observations? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Resolution, Action 2.03. Whereas, job descriptions have been revised and new job descriptions created where needed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Shamani School Board Directors hereby approves the following new and revised job descriptions to take effective July 1, 2018, with the insistence to Superintendent, Director of Administration to take effective immediately.
I need a second? Second. Comments, observations, or questions?
Just to add some commentary for the public's. The descriptions here are not job postings. They are just descriptions that the administration has designed and reclarified and realigned for a future modeling in the district. The superintendent will, at a future date, for two positions, I believe, have postings made available to the public as well as applicants. And I appreciate the administration getting this done in such a speedy manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes- Motion passes 7-0. Items for approval at the public board meeting. Bucks County Intermediary Unit 2018-19 Program and Services and Instructional Materials and Research Services Budget. 3.02 Acceptance of Donation. 3.03 K-12 School Canceling Plan. 3.04 Overnight Trips. 3.05 Sunday Facility Usage. 3.06 The First Reading of Board Policy Series 600 Finance. 3.07 Bid Approvals. And 3.08 Budget Transfers. Any comments, questions, or observations on any of those?
I have a question regarding 3.04 Overnight Trips, specifically Trip Number 2 and Trip Number 3. My question is, Trip Number 2. We have... Why doesn't it work? Okay. Sorry. Accompany eight to 16 students. And then there's a reference of a second chaperone that will only attend if eight students are present. And on Overnight Trip Number 3, again, the advisor. The chaperone is now crossed out. And again, the advisor is accompanying four to eight minors. My question is, why is there not a second chaperone present on those trips?
So, for the lesser number of students, it was believed that a single chaperone would be sufficient. And we do that often. I mean, we'll have kids on trips with those smaller numbers and single chaperones.
Okay. So, I understand the ratio. But again, I'm going to stress that you have one adult accompanying minors alone on an overnight trip. So, I, that raises some concerns for me, why there's not two adults present.
All of our trips. I mean, we'll take students on different functions throughout the school year, during the school day. I recognize overnight trip is another level of responsibility, but we're always looking at ratios in terms of what's the right mix for adult versus student. So, you know, it's certainly a question for you all. I guess if you want to direct us to do differently as a board. But the practice has been for small numbers of students to recognize that a single adult's going to be able to be responsible for those students, whether it's a daytime trip or an overnight trip. And that's been our practice.
I think, and if I'm wrong here, you can, you know, help me a little bit. I think you're getting towards more of, for lack of a better word, a liability issue. I think you're trying to explain very tactfully. I just think, I, yeah. I'm more concerned, you know, for the teacher themselves, that they not be put in a position, you know, where, you know, there's only one of them with a bunch of students. I know for years I've approved these trips. And honestly, we got good people, good chaperones. I think Mrs. Bowman's just probably relating some of that liability-type issues that tend to happen today. And we want to make sure everybody's protected.
So, again, we're looking at a cutoff. I don't know that we have a hard and fast number, but the number can go low. It can go three students. It can go two students. We can have one student qualify. So, you know, the question would be, is there a number that we want to use as a threshold? Or do we want to say every overnight trip, you're sending two adults? We can accommodate the desire of the board.
I'd like to point out, we, this has come up a number of times. I brought it up because I said, you know, my experience in scouting, we had a number. I don't know that we need to do that. I agree. To me, it's more of, if with this number of group, let's, they're in one vehicle, one driver, one adult. If that vehicle breaks down, he has to go for help. Who's left with the children? I have an issue with that, and I would like to see the board address that. I don't know that we need to put a ratio necessarily of students, but I would like to see at least two adults on these trips. It's my two cents towards it.
Yeah. That was my concern. I, I don't want to compare because it's apples to oranges. But in my district, you don't travel alone with children ever. You have a parent chaperone present or a second teacher, whether it's a day trip to the Franklin Institute. We don't do overnight trips. And also being a scout leader, we have a rule that's called Too Deep. And you are never alone as an adult with any group of children at any given time. So, when I saw this, I was a little taken back that we don't have a policy. It doesn't matter if it's one child or two children. There should be two adults, at least one teacher, one chaperone, or two teachers on trips. To me, that's just common sense. It's protecting the teacher as much as it is protecting the child.
Okay. So, I want to ask you, you said trips. You didn't say overnight trips. Every trip, you want two adults?
Yeah.
Because we have sporting events where we'll take a sports team, tennis team, might go on a bus with a coach. You know, again, I think we have to be careful. I think we can do anything that you desire. It's not been the practice. And so, we just have to decide.
I think Mr. Allen and Mrs. Bowman both bring up a good point. I do want to say that I think Mr. Jones brings up a good point. This needs to be more well-thought-out. We don't want to make a decision, you know, at the table right now. Maybe this is something Mrs. Boyle can bring up as we continue to do policies. You wrote it down. So, we can, you know, it's on the board's mind. I just think we need to have more discussion and, of course, bring in our, you know, principal-level administration to, you know, discuss it in the future.
For the immediate purpose, though, because this will be on the agenda for the upcoming meeting, we can easily put the second adult on the trip for the overnight trips that are in front of us. And then that'll allow us a little flexibility to get to the policy conversation. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. If you could include the chaperone that's been crossed out on both trips on the paperwork?
She'll be very happy.
I know she will.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Like, this has come up more than once since I've been involved. And I believe we need to, we need to address it.
We have it for future policy? Good job. On the agenda? Okay. All right.
I want to bring up an issue on 3.06 Board Policy 600. At the Board Policy meeting where we addressed the PSBA 600, we did carve out one policy, and I believe it was number 609, that we wanted to have referred to the Business Committee to make sure that they do some due diligence on that. It's a very lengthy and complicated policy regarding the new Act 10 investments. So, I didn't think it was good for, you know, the Policy Committee to go into that area. I think, you know, we were hoping that your Business Committee can take it up and maybe bring in some of our investment experts and make sure that there's nothing in that restricting us from taking full advantage of Act 10 if we decide to, you know, to get into Act 10 investments. But I just think it's a little extra level of oversight that I think's warranted. My question would be, though, is, is do we leave 609 out of the decision next week, excuse me, next meeting? Or do you believe that there's going to be time between now and that meeting that you'll be able to take it up? And you're shaking your head no.
The next Business Operations meeting is April 6, correct?
Third.
April 3rd. So, I would say we carve that one out and...
Let me ask if that concern, though I understand exactly what you're talking about in terms of the implementation of that policy, because it is involved and it does talk about options that we would have with regard to our investments. Those are all available options the policy speaks to. It doesn't say that we have to do any of that. Is the concern simply how we might choose to enact those actions? If, so the policy itself, and I don't want to speak for you, but maybe the policy, maybe the policy itself is okay to approve, but before we were to do anything, to have the committee then take that policy in concert with our investment people to talk about what options would be desired, if anything, to do differently?
I would be in agreement with that. Of course, I would ask for, you know, our Chair of the Policy Committee to weigh in. I'm just concerned with the action portion of it.
Sure.
I don't have really problems with the language. I just want to know how the language affects the action. And that's my concern.
And I want to say that that is a, there's actually a lot of opportunity there. I think that you're exactly right. The Business Operations Committee has to look at what it says is now available to boards and get that guidance. We had someone come in and talk about a limited option for us. But that policy does speak to a variety of things that are available to us. And so, I think it's worth a district like ours to spend a little bit of time and before we actually do any of that, for sure. But to have the wording and the flexibility and the outline there that the policy provides for us is a good start. And then that would be the next step.
Yeah. Is it staying on? Okay. There it is. I think we, you know, the discussion we had, I think, I don't think any of us were in disagreement about the wording. There were questions about these local government investment pools, you know, and some of the investments that are available, that none of us knew whether we're taking advantage of those. So, I think that was one of the directions that we'd like to see.
Well, you know, when we were preparing in advance for the committee meeting and we reviewed administratively that policy, for sure, that there's opportunity there, carefully, to take a look with investment professionals to decide what the district could potentially do to enhance our revenue, on the revenue side. But again, I think you speak perfectly correctly when you say, let's get people in front of us who can give us some guidance and some recommendations based off of now what seems to be a broader opportunity for us from an investment standpoint.
I think it was discussed at the meeting. I think we agreed. But certainly, you know, any additional, you know, you know, information or research, you know, would be in line.
And that's exactly what I would like to see happen. And once the Business Committee is able to have that, I would hope that if there are any recommendations or changes that need to be made, we could act on that in policy.
Yes.
You know, right away, instead of backlogging it to make sure that we can take advantage of that when it occurs. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Boyle.
Anyone else?
I have a question regarding 3.08. So, I guess it's a question for Barb. Your budget transfer items? You got it?
Yeah.
Okay. It's been a while. So, correct me if I'm reading the general ledger numbers. Number one, is that a transfer from a cash account to an accounts payable account? Okay. So, these 1,010 numbers, what kind of accounts are they?
Okay. Sorry. The 1110 is education, is an education, it's a function. So, all the 1100s are educational functions. 1200s are special ed functions. They're regular education functions.
Okay. And the 2380?
The 2380 is a business function. And the objects would make up, the 650 object is one of the supplies. 580 is meeting reimbursements, different things like that. Like, you know, where they would do professional development, go to seminars, things like that.
Okay. And 2620?
2620 is another business function. It's part of the facilities department. Is that it? Oh, okay.
So, they're all line item transfers, correct?
Yes. Anytime you're changing the first two digits of your function or the first digit of your object, it has to be a board transfer.
Thank you. That brings us to the committee reports. I guess Business Operations, I will take that.
Slow us down just, I'd like to just make sure, because I know the Business Operations Committee spent some time on 3.07. And Mrs. Hollenbeck's not here. And I just want to make sure that we have opportunity to talk through what will be planned to be on the agenda, which is the bid for the high school elevator in the older portion of the high school. There was conversation at the Business Operations Committee meeting in terms of priority of projects. This project in particular, in terms of the cost of this project, we've been bidding this project out for a couple of years now. And the Board Committee had asked us to get some more information. I provided to the Board members some of that detail or all of the detail that we had. And Reynolds or engineering consultants were able to give, I think, some, a good scope, a good outline of just what we're dealing with when you're trying to replace an elevator of that age and that kind of a scenario. But again, it was at least enough of a conversation at that committee that I thought it'd be worth making sure there isn't any further questions here now.
I have a couple of comments on it, if that's...
Sure.
As I read it over, and of course, I had some insight into it with elevators I've worked on when I was an electrician. What they're saying is basically, is that it's been bid shelved, bid shelved. Elevators are a very small community, people that work on it. And they're not going to be bothered continuing to bid if, it's just a waste of their time. They'll move to, and this is not a particularly profitable job. And as I said, as I read it down, I think Reynolds did a fantastic job of kind of outlining what's involved. Anyway, without getting into specific details, just want to say, the high school, the gift it just keeps giving. And I'll leave it at that.
As Mr. Allen indicated, this is why you sometimes try to go new instead of try to save something that's old. But regardless, moving forward... I do appreciate the extra diligence taken by the administration, reaching out to our engineering consultants just to get their feedback. Look, there's no doubt that it's an old elevator. And at some time in either the near future or very near future, you know, it's going to have to be replaced. That's going to have to happen. The question is, right now is, we've been told it's safe and it's operating. The question is, is, you know, if it ever comes to a major problem, whether or not, you know, it can be remained in service. I just have trouble at this particular point when I know what else is on the want list of things to do, whether or not, you know, we can dedicate $347,000 to the elevator right now or, you know, wait and see. I would find it hard to believe that in the next few years, if it needed major repairs, you know, you would get even close to that. But I also understand the administration's doing exactly what three years ago we told them to start doing, which was we want you to start being proactive about, you know, these buildings and bringing these issues to us, you know, ahead of time. You know, so I just don't know where to go on this, on this item. Without knowing where we're at on the budget at this particular point, it's just, it's just, it's just a difficult decision for me to say, you know, dedicate $347,000 to something that's actually working. You know, but I just think, is, I just think it needs more discussion.
We need to have more discussion on it. Excuse me. I just wanted to add, one concern that, because we have discussed this. One of the issues I think that's going to come into play is the age of the elevator and parts available for it. And, you know, I can tell you, you know, it's fair enough to say, how many times it's going to break down? And we can just keep nickel and dime it to keep it going to save ourselves the 345 outlay. However, my concern... ourselves the 345 outlay. However, my concern would be, fine, but what if the P22 bottle, you know, breaks? Now we have to manufacture one, and price from that point of view could quickly skyrocket. Just want to point that out there. I do believe we need a little more discussion on this, because I see, I agree. We don't know where we're at entirely with the budget yet, and we're talking 350, 345, you know.
The other thing I'm wondering, and this is one of the deficiencies that's in the bid to begin with, is the fact that unlike some of the projects we've done over the last couple of years, we've been able to co-mingle projects together, and we're able to reduce costs by getting an economy of scale. There's no economy of scale in this project. Now, this elevator is in, if I remember correctly, the unrenovated portion of the building. So I'm wondering, you know, what projects, you know, may be coming our way in the future that if we were able to co-mingle it with something else on that end of the building, we'd be able to reduce the cost as well. I mean, I know it's a catch-22, but we've done very good on co-mingling projects in the past.
You're talking about a specialized industry, and I apologize for cutting you off.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, yes, the elevator is considered safe, right? You know, would you want one of your children in the elevator when it decides to become not safe? Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I don't think safety is the issue.
Oh, I think safety is the issue.
Well, I don't believe it is. That's not what was presented to us at the time. The, its operation is what the issue was. Is, can the elevator be fixed because of lack of parts, is the way it was presented at the meeting to me. We specifically asked, is the elevator certified? Is it safe? And we were assured that there's no safety issues with the elevator. If there was a safety issue, we wouldn't be having this discussion, I don't think.
Yeah, the issue really was, like Steve said, that was presented to us, it is safe, it is operational. But the John's point is, since it's such an antiquated piece, well, the problem is, if it does break, then an emergency fix on that, if the parts are even available, could be, costs more than $345,000. Then they got us over the barrel, so.
Here's the other issue. Trying to coordinate this with other work that's being done across the board, this is such a specialized industry. You're not really going to be able to coordinate that unless, of course, you have other work that's being done on, let's say, an elevator.
Well, it's not so much the cab and the control system. The cab and the control system is dedicated, but there's masonry, there's best masonry issues with the shaft, there's some steelwork that needs to be done. And these are, the way I understand it is, is there's at least five trades involved in this, in this rehab of the elevator. So it's not all just elevator work. Now, again, I think it's a catch-22 either way. It's just if I knew where we're at on the budget, I'd be a lot safer in making decisions. But I also understand the schedule for the summer, we can't wait that long. So, you know, it makes it difficult.
That's exactly what I was going to say. So let me, let's just review a couple of things that most of the experienced Board members know, probably the new Board members can put these pieces together. We don't approve a budget in Pennsylvania until June. We have to go out to bid and get these projects lined up much earlier, when these are these bigger projects, because the summer's your window to do your large facility-type projects. So that's the catch-22 that we begin with, right? You know, because of the timing there, there's always this concept of trying to make sure that we can choose and pick projects that are going to make sense when all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So one of the things that the Board did this current budget is they moved from a $500,000 number up to a $900,000 number for facilities. I can't sit here and promise you that we're going to maintain that $900,000. Actually, my recommendation to you, and was already to the Business Committee, was that that number needs to go higher. We have a $3.5 million allotment of projects for this upcoming summer and every summer for the next five to 10 years. So $900,000 doesn't even start to cover that, it just backs all those projects up. So my point to you is, I expect that at least $900,000 will be in the budget, I would hope. That's going to be our drive to provide you a budget that you can approve with at least that much in it. And we do have a jumpstart because of the bond refinancing, that there will be in the capital unexpected, prior to the refinancing of that bond that we just did, an unexpected $185, $190, approximately $1,000. So that, at that point, it's the balance of that that we need to get into the budget for the upcoming year. And finally, you do have a reserve of, that you can, you know, go to for capital projects, but I'm not even touching that at this point, I'm not even talking about that. So, so timing's really important. The money, in all likelihood, is going to be there in one of those forms that we discussed. And, you know, Mr. Allen kind of reemphasized what was already there, is the fact that we have bid this project a number of times. Certainly, our guys feel like the iron's hot, this is the time to kind of strike for this project and get this done. We do a lot of facility work. You try to stay ahead. You try not to wait for the roof to leak. You try not to wait for the parking lot to crumble. You know, you try to make sure that you're looking and trying to see as best you can, when you can do that facility work, so that you don't have to do the worst-case scenario fix.
Because I'd like to say that the number of projects that were canceled at the last minute over the years, you know, I mean, I would hate to even think. And they were all considered terribly critical and crucial, but at the last minute, you know, the money wasn't there, and so they weren't done. And, you know, so I think that's something to think about.
And the other, you know, discussion we had, I appreciate the fact that, you know, there's going to be almost $190,000 from the bond issue, but as you said, with $3.5 million worth of projects in the book, we're spending that money, we're spending that money somewhere, somewhere. I mean, it's, I have no problem, you know, leaving it in, and for broader discussion, there are two Board members that aren't here. I'm not saying I won't support it or won't, will not support it. I just, at this particular point, you're correct about the budget, it is a process. But generally, by about May, we kind of are kind of zoned in on where we're going to be, you know. But I understand if we want to do it this summer, we can't wait to May. So, you know, it's, it's, just, we have another two weeks to sit on it, I guess, so.
Oh, it's agreed. I think it's agreed that we do need to have further discussion on this. However, are we going to be proactive, especially in items such as this? Or are we going to continue to kick the can down the road? At least, we're looking at it now. We do need to discuss it further, but we do need to start looking at these projects and making sure that we're on top of them before they become problematic issues later on and cost us twice as much.
That's definitely something to be said for that, and that was the emphasis of the whole consolidation process and the Giza projects we did, you know, the last couple of years. I agree wholeheartedly like that, but, you know, as long as we all understand that there's never going to be enough money in the capital projects budget to deal with all our capital issues. So, and with us transferring more and more money to our pension obligations, it even leaves us less wiggle room. So, like I said, I have no problem with it staying on the agenda, just we need more thought around it, I think.
Yeah, we'll have more discussion over the next two weeks before the next meeting, and, yeah, that's what we need to do. Brings us to committee reports. Business Operations, I'll take that, because I was at the meeting. Pretty much, we just discussed what we talked about at the meeting. We talked about the insurance proposals. We also had a presentation from Reynolds regarding where we stood on the Giza projects and the monitoring that they were going to put into effect going forward on a quarterly basis. What was the other thing?
Temperature issues.
Yeah, to Brodus' point, the temperature issues were brought up. They want to do some tweaking. Some tweaking needs to be done in different buildings. I think the high school's one of them, especially, this is on the Giza, yeah, on the Giza. And they have to work on the, it's all centrally computer, centrally controlled. They have to fine-tune that a little bit more. So, all right. Probably not the answer you wanted to hear, but it's the answer.
Okay, next Tuesday, the 20th, would be the next Educational Development Committee meeting. We're going to discuss, we're going to, a review of all the upcoming programs that we would, we are going to budget in. Okay, and on the, let me see, the 22nd, we're going to have our next Policy Committee. And we're going to review any of the first reading edits for the PSBA Policy Series 600. And we're going to review PSBA Policy Series 700, which is property, and our review of some additional local policy needs. And on that same day, on the 20th, is also the IU meeting, which will be in Doylestown, you know, you know, in case anyone would like to go. Seven o'clock, right, you know.
I want to thank Chris for getting this together for me. But the Shammany Education Foundation Board met this past Monday, February 12, and during the meeting, the following items were discussed. The Alumni Committee meeting has been rescheduled for Tuesday, March 6, at 6:30 here in the District Boardroom, for anyone who would like to attend. It was originally scheduled for February, but was canceled due to inclement weather. All interested alumni are invited to attend. Tickets for the Benefit Harlem Wizards game on Saturday, April 14, at the Shammany High School, will be available within a week. They will be sold online and at the door, subject to availability. The game starts at 7:00 PM and will be held in Gym 3. Maple Point Coach Skip Mason will once again lead our Shammany Dream Team to victory. The next meeting for the Shammany Education Foundation is scheduled for Monday, March 12, at 4:30 PM in the CNI Conference Room at Maple Point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. PSBA Liaison?
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. As Mr. Jones alluded to in the beginning of the meeting, there's been, you know, continuing talk about the budget and what its real impact is going to be. Even though educational spending has been increased, is not been able to keep pace with the liabilities that school districts face. That's a continuing discussion. And of course, that all revolves mainly around districts' pension obligations and the ability to maintain those payments. Mrs. Boyle, I need to give credit for, actually alerted me to this month's PSBA magazine, which had an excellent article on there. And I encourage the new school Board members, if you've gotten it and haven't read it yet, it was a very good article on what it takes to be a new school Board member. It was even good for old school Board members to read it. So I want to thank Mrs. Boyle for alerting me to, to look at that article. Other than that, there's a whole host of legislative issues. There's a PSBA conference coming up. Encourage you all to log into the PSBA site, and you can, you know, read for yourselves all the initiatives that are going on. The question is, is how much time do you have to spend on those initiatives? But do our best to allocate the time we have to, to the issues at hand. Other than that, there's really no other information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pirtana. Technical School, Mr. Allen?
Yes, Tech Board met on January 22. I was attended by myself, Ms. Bowman, Mr. Kovitz. Continuing discussion on the funding formula as relates to the districts. That will be ongoing. We're a little closer to an agreement on that. There's more of a discussion on the bond obligations regarding the renovations they want to do, the new build they want to do, and what each district wants to contribute to that. The ongoing discussion on that until we finally, because the articles Confederation that we've signed are coming due, so we have to nail that down. But all districts need to agree before we continue. I will report, without giving specifics, that Shammany will be, will be doing fine either way. There's not, we're not going to increase our obligation or lessen our obligation significantly any either way. Other districts have other issues with it. Other than that, that was the bulk of the conversation. They've, they've also discussed moving away from the consortium in their health care. Doesn't seem to be catering to the smaller schools, still more of a district issue. And that's really all we need to add.
Thank you. Right. That comes to, brings us to our second public comment session. Anyone?
Hi, Steve Rotis again. I want to pick up a little bit where I left off, but before that, I want to talk about the elevator situation. It might have been great when it was first put in. It may have even been in the middle of the school layout at that time. But now it's in the corner. I've been offered an elevator pass for the last three years. It's crazy to walk across three hallways, take an elevator down for a floor, and walk three hallways back, when you could, you know, go slowly down the stairs one flight and be where you have to be in the beginning. It makes no sense to refurbish the elevator, you know, it makes no sense to have refurbished the high school, but that's a whole different story. It is insane to spend money to put it in the corner of a building where all the students are in class on one side of it and nobody on the other side of it. You ought to figure out a way how to put it on the outside of the building and run it up from the middle to both floors and just be done with it, or, it's just a mess. And I hate to, I hate to even think about spending, you know, money in that elevator. You know, you know what? In another five or 10 years, it might keep me from substituting. But nevertheless, I wanted to get back to something else, that I talk about, are you getting money's worth from substitute bus drivers and substitutes in the classroom? And this is, you know, it's a pretty important question. Because in the classroom, I have been approached by people in various subjects, and say, you know, there was a sub in for me the other day who did not speak English, could not even take roll. So I think something is missing in the quality of the substitute teachers that we are getting. I mean, basically, it was explained to me at one time that, you know, in addition to a college degree, you have to be breathing, and that is the sole requirement of the state. And it seems that it's still true. There should be, maybe with, you know, more money, you could entice a better quality of substitute. Some are very good, some are mediocre, like myself, and some are, are not even as good as I am.
You're all for even?
I'll settle for uneven. But it is, it is a problem, because you have to stand before it. Is there a, is there a three-minute?
I wasted it on the elevator.
Okay, but I have something for Barb. I just want an explanation about the number of buses we're buying every year. We seem to have spent, or will have spent, two, almost $3 million in three years on buses, and it says 10 buses. I don't understand, is it 10 buses a year that we buy, or? So, just an explanation of that. It's just an explanation.
Anyone have any future topics? Okay. That brings us to Board Comment.
Is it on? Okay. I just wanted to comment on Mr. Rotis' substitute teacher concern. That's not just a Shammany concern. I go through the same thing. But in our building, it's at the discretion of the principal. If they have a concern about the substitute, they can release the substitute for the day. For example, if they cannot communicate with the students, you know, they don't show up on time, it's, you know, it's the job of the principal. So I would encourage you to have conversation with your principal about the quality of principal, of substitutes that are allowed to work in the building. But that's an ongoing problem. That's not just a Shammany problem.
If I go to sub, I don't know the quality of everybody else. I'm in the classroom.
Right. So that's why I'm saying, have a conversation with your administration, because it's within their power their power to release that sub for the day. They'll have to provide coverage for the day. You know, people will lose preps and they probably will not like you very much, but...
The problem of coverage, I really don't understand that.
Right. But I'm saying the quality of substitutes, that's not a Shamany thing. That, that is the way it is. When they opened up and Kelly Services and Source for Teachers started mass hiring subs that are not certified teachers, that's what happened. So, but like I said, have a conversation with your administration because they can, give them the name of the substitute that you had concerns about. They do have the power to release that sub or not have that sub admitted into the building to work.
To address Mr. Rottis's concerns about the cold rooms at the high school, it's a known issue, it's been a known issue. It's separate from the Giza issues that we had this winter. As Mr. Sullivan was explaining, we did have Reynolds come in and talk about the temperature issues. One of them was a result of a boiler that went down at one of the facilities, but there is also a control issue that Mr. Sullivan explained, that they're, they're working through those issues. And it's part of the process, it needs to be refined. You know, when they designed the Giza profile, you know, they designed it with a generic temperature map in mind and as they learn, and the system is self-adjusting, they have to set parameters in it, those buildings that are Giza, those problems will be corrected. The high school, you know, I've had this conversation with our prior facilities supervisor as well as our new one, that that needs to be taken a better look at. Some of that issue is a design issue. There was just no way that they're going to get around it, had to do with, you know, the, I guess for lack of a better word, the things that needed to be saved between, you know, the renovation portion of the building and the new portion of the building and how some of those systems are shared and controlled. I know K-Wing is notorious for sometimes being like a refrigerator, you know, but our new facilities supervisor, you know, I've asked him, you know, that that needs to be prioritized and for him to come up with a solution. And I am sure within his evaluation of the buildings, that will be in there, whether or not it's something that makes the cut to what's available to fix or not, you know, I don't know. But, you know, just same thing with the elevator issue, you know, just so the public knows, there are two elevators in the building. One of them is brand-new and was installed when they did the renovation. The other elevator is the, the old original elevator from 1965. And the problem, as explained to me, is the differences in the location of that building. Where the elevator goes on the second floor of the old portion of the building, if you were to use the elevator in the front portion of the building for a person that can't walk, you would not be able to get to some of those areas. And that's the reason why there's such a question of preventing it from going down. Are we going to refurbish it now to prevent it from going, going down? Because otherwise, I would assume the only solution's going to be is to change classrooms. Students that, you know, need access would have to be moved to a different part of the building where to get access from the elevator. You know, that would be our ultimate backup plan, I would imagine, if, if that would happen, but we're trying to discuss it not happening and justify the funds at this time to do it. So I don't think there's a question of, of, it's not properly located, it is what it is because of the way the building was rehabbed at the time. 10 years ago, when the building was rehabbed, the elevator was 10 years younger, so it was in a lot better shape. But this, these are the issues that we're starting to see with the old portion of the high school that didn't get touched during the renovation that are now coming to our attention. I think last year, we did, was it $900,000 worth of roofing or $1.1 million worth of roofing on the old portion of the building that, you know, wasn't touched during the renovation, but that's, that's just the way it is. There's, there's nothing we can do about that. As far as the bus situation goes, there is money for buses in the budget. We left the money in last year, even though we didn't purchase the buses, but we did purchase vans. We took some routes back that proved to be a cost savings, and whether or not we buy buses or not this year will be a decision, I guess, we'll, we'll take on as we move forward into the budget process. But the van initiative on paper seems to be very lucrative to the district and saving over what we were doing, bringing back some jobs in the meantime, so from that point of view, that's, that, that looks like that's going to work out very good for us. Other than that, I appreciate everyone coming out for the meeting and hopefully we'll get some people on the groom's side next, next time in the audience. Thank you.
Okay, I have the rest of your answers to your questions for the budget. The payment in lieu of taxes, that goes till June of 2020. The last taxes will be July of 19, taxes, which is the 1920 year, 20-year. And then I'll be in touch with the solicitor to see where we go from there on that one. The tax collectors, we have them in two places. The one set of tax collectors on page 58, those are our regular six tax collectors that are voted in every four years, and we pay them through a salary. So that's why they're in that section on that page. The contracted tax collectors, the county collects our delinquent taxes, Berkhimer collects our occupation privilege tax, our business privilege, mercantile tax, and our amusement tax. So that's all in there. The noneducational subsidies, that's that state property tax reduction gaming money. We don't have it yet, and that's what comes off of our real estate tax. So right now, it's in the real estate tax section. Soon as we get that money, it will come off of that section and go to the other section, so it's no more or less money, it's neutral. Yeah. I think that is it.
Mr. Jones, back in, if I could take you back to the superintendent's report, I just noticed an item here that I don't know if you, you actually went through it or not. The bequesting Oracle Academy, did you, did you explain that?
No, it's in the report, but I didn't talk about it. And actually, I left it there because we were, we capture some of these stories that we have from our different schools. My hesitation was I just wasn't ready to report out on that because I wanted to double-check if we're across the district with that program as opposed to just the one school. So I'll, I'll report out on that later.
Okay, thank you. Actually, that was, that's related to my...
I try to, I try to guess what the questions might be, and if I can't answer them, then I'm not sure. That, that one got into my report, some of the stories do come out of our, highlights out of our Facebook feed. And so that was one of them. It's a good story, but I just want to make sure that before we talk about it here, we find out if it's across our district.
I had an addition, I had additional comment. I just wanted to say thank you to anybody that worked or organized Shammany High School's ninth and 10th grade formal. It was very well organized. They had parking assistants that directed the parents the entire way in, so you knew exactly where to drop your child off. Dr. McGee was there, opening doors at the curb to let the kids out. It was, it was, everybody was welcomed, it was well-organized, the decorations were beautiful, the way they decorated the gym. And getting those parents, usually when you pull up for an event at a school, it's mass chaos with the parents in the parking lot. Everybody got in and out very smoothly, there was no, you know, honking or trying to get out of the parking lot, it ran very smoothly. My son attends tech, but he was able to attend that formal, so I want to thank Dr. McGee, all the teachers that worked, that sacrificed their Friday night, and all the support staff that worked the event. It was a great success, thank you very much.
I just have to put my two cents in about the Sweeney Todd play, which I thought was incredible. My wife and I went, they did a fabulous job. I enjoyed it very, very much. We had a great time, and I thought they just, it was over and above what I expected. So I want to thank Mr. Jones for helping me out with that. But just getting there and just enjoying that was a pleasure. And also, just one last thing, as you see, I'm wearing an Eagles jersey, just had to for tonight's meeting because we've, we've played this up for so long throughout the district and all of our schools, and it's on the website, and the parade was incredible. So, you know, I just thought the Eagles did a great job, and it was enjoyable to have all of this, all this time and to enjoy that game and the parade. So I just wanted to put that out there, thank you.
Yeah, I, actually, I was going to say that, Tom. Glad you mentioned that. I wanted to thank Chris Stanley and all of our schools for sharing with the Facebook page. It was, as an Eagles fan, it was a fantastic lead-up to the game. The game was fantastic and all, but it was just so fantastic to, among all the political arguments going on on Facebook, it was fantastic to see the kids' videos going up, enjoying the, the excitement leading up to the game and supporting our city's team. I just want to thank Chris and all the teacher staff that were involved, and especially the students. And I, it looks like they had a lot of fun with that, and I really hope they did. Thank you, that's...
Anyone else?
Come on, they're out of control.
They're doing good. Well, you know what, I, I'm not sure if any other former board presidents have ever sat next to a Hall of Famer like Terrell Owens, but I feel honored tonight. And with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?